All right, well hello and welcome to the June McComb Park Board of Commissioners meeting. And as always, we will start with the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, is there a second? All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And the agenda stands approved. Consideration of an action on the meeting minutes from, let's see, today's, we're in June, May. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve the minutes.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And minutes stand approved. Bills and transfers and monthly financial statements, Commissioner Hamm, please.
Thank you. For May, the consolidated fund, the cash on hand at the end of the month was $190,428. The revenues for May was $101,793 better than budget. This was due to a check for the patent project reimbursement from the state, which as you recall, it around $101,108. The expenses were $24,189 more than budget for the end of the month. We ended $77,604 better than budget expectations. And for the year-to-date, it is at $80,163 better than budget. For the general fund, which ended in May with $244,854. Revenue's ended the month $15,766 ahead of budget. This was due from the personal property replacement tax of $28,137. The expenses for the month ran $11,066 less than budget. Overall, we ended the month $26,832 better than budget projections for the year-to-date. We are $82,974 ahead of the budget projections. For corporate, we did end the month $18,862 better than budget. Year-to-date, we're $36,332 ahead of budget. Recreation, for the month overall, ended $4,449 ahead of budget. Year-to-date is $10,595 ahead of budget. Lakeview, overall for the month, ended $26 below budget. Year-to-date is $1,519 ahead of budget. For Ball Four, the month ended $311 better than budget. Year-to-date is $107 better than budget expectations. Special Rec, overall end of the month, $2,206 better than budget. Year-to-date is $8,297 better than budget. For the police account, overall for the month, $212 better than budget. Year-to-date, $1,060 ahead of budget. Payroll, the wages ended the month $5,466 below budget. And year-to-date is $31,700 below budget.
All right, thank you Russ. Are there any questions for Commissioner Hamm? There are no questions, motion to approve bills and transfers in the monthly financial statements.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, is there a second? All right, it's been moved and seconded, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Gammage?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamm?
Aye.
All right, and the bills and transfers and the monthly financial statements stand approved as published. It looks like we have no one for open public presentations to the commissioners. So we're moving on to the next agenda item, election of officers. It's that time once again to elect our officers for the Board of Commissioners. So tonight we'll be voting on the President, Vice President, Treasurer, Secretary, Assistant Secretary, and Assistant Treasurer. All right, so we'll start with, is there a motion for the President position?
Well, we need a nomination.
Oh, I'm sorry, a nomination.
I would like to nominate Phil Weiss for the position of President.
Do I need to do a second on that? No.
Yes.
Or yes, is there a second? All right, I accept that position. All right, so now we'll move on to, oh, sorry, roll call, sorry.
That's all right. Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Gammage?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamm?
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss?
Aye. All right. I don't remember a roll.
I think it was because of Zoom.
Maybe so, but that's okay, we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep doing roll call. It doesn't hurt anybody, right? All right, so, okay, is there a nomination for the Vice President position? I would like to nominate Sterling.
I would second that nomination.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gammage?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamm?
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards?
All right. A nomination for Treasurer. I would like to nominate, yes, Russ, as Treasurer.
Now he's not going to accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, do you accept?
Yeah, I would accept.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hamm?
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Gammage?
Aye.
All right, next is nomination for Secretary. In all the years we've done this, we always have our Executive Director as our Secretary, so I would like to nominate Ms. Lenz as our Secretary.
I would second that nomination.
It's in my contract, yeah.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Gammage?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamm?
Aye.
Okay, next would be the nomination for an Assistant Secretary. And once again, in years past, we've had Chris Frankhauser as our Assistant Secretary. And since he's not here.
I will accept on his behalf.
There we go.
Oh, if he gets nominated.
We need to nominate, so I would like to nominate Chris.
I would second that nomination.
Happy to hear it. Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Gammage?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamm?
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss?
Aye. And the final nomination is the Assistant Treasurer position. I would like to nominate one Emily Gammage as Assistant Treasurer.
I would second that nomination.
All right.
I'll accept it.
Commissioner Gammage?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamm?
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards?
All right, congratulations everyone. I guess we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the President's Report. Once again, our annual audit presentation with Skitch LLP has been delayed. So we are hopeful that they will join us next month. Also wanted to let y'all know if any of the commissioners would like to join me for the Heritage Days Parade, to please either let myself or Kara know. I don't think it's a very long parade route, but you know, help pass out candy and whatnot for the littles and the, and the big ones, you know, I like candy, so I'll probably eat some along the way, keep me energized. So just let us know if any of y'all want to walk along with us.
Or potentially ride.
Oh, there is a potential ride, oh, there you go. So there you go, all right. Oh, and finally, the McDonough County Special Rec Association will be meeting with us next month. It should be probably about 15, 20-minute meeting, but that will be before we start our, it'll still be at six, but that will be before our regular monthly meeting, okay? And that's all I have, so move on to the Director's Report.
Okey-dokey. I will try to get through this fairly quickly. As everybody's aware, we did enter into Phase Five for the State of Illinois. Obviously vaccinated, or non-vaccinated people need to remain masked during programs. For all of our youth programs, for kiddos ages 12 and under, no, under the age of 12, we are going to mask no matter what. Even if our staff are vaccinated, they'll be wearing masks just for the safety of the kiddos seeing how they have not had that opportunity. So, and we have several programs this summer focused in on that age group. So we just want to make sure we're providing the highest safety level during our programming. But otherwise, hats are off, have fun, no. But we do, we don't have any limitations on group sizes or anything at this time. So, very excited for that. Our Push for Parks partners, again, we've had another generous organization extend their campaign. So Magnolia's, Lisa over at Magnolia's has extended her Ballpark Burger campaign. Essentially, she just doesn't want to give us less money than she did last year. She said, hey, if you want to compete with yourself, we're not upset. So, I know there's a lot of construction on the square, please go out and support Magnolia's. You know, it's great to support our local businesses, even during this construction. If we can support them through COVID, we can support them through some broken sidewalks, especially those who are trying to support the local community and provide more opportunities. So, that is going on for the time being. Nelson's Clothing's campaign is still going on, Saks underwear, I don't know how much they cost, they're slightly expensive I've heard, but $5 from each pair goes to the Push for Parks campaign just in time for Daddy's Day, so. And then, I'm excited to announce Sullivan Taylor is stepping up as our July Push for Parks partner, this is our first time partnering with them. They are doing what they're calling Freedom Toast, because it's July, isn't it, Fourth of July? So it is stuffed French toast, $13 for a basket and $3 will go towards the Patent Park project. It looks amazing, not going to lie. So, very excited for that. Giving you guys a quick update on the Patent Park project. So our playgrounds have been installed, very excited. They've been installed for a while, but now we do have the landscape timbers around the playground equipment, as well as the mulch in place. So, and if you'll see on your screens, here's a couple of them. You know, I had to put the zipline first just for us, but they are out there, they are usable. Please excuse the dirt that's around them. We are going to be planting seed a little bit later in the year. If we plant it now, it's just going to be a waste of money because we'd have to be out there watering every day, so, yeah, they are open, they're, we've seen some kids playing on them, it sounds like it's been fantastic, so, very excited about that. Also completed last week was the parking lot, right next to the new dog park, so that was also very exciting, that's been a kind of a hassle with the rain, so Scott Collins and his crew were out there and completing that project for us, so thankfully, now that that's done, we'll be able to have some time to focus on the Jackie and Dave Thompson Dog Park construction, so hopefully that will begin, if not, this week, early next week. And there's a photo for you just to see the progress, it is completed now, that's a progress photo. Also new today, we have started installing new disc golf baskets out at the Everwood Disc Golf Course. We've had a lot of help from, there's Jeff actually doing work. We've had a lot of help from Bill Walker, he is an avid disc golfer, and he's provided a lot of insight for us for a sport that not many of us have expertise in at the office, so we did get some brand-new baskets, those will be installed, hopefully all of them tomorrow. So we are excited for our avid disc golfers to enjoy that upgrade.
How many total?
Eighteen. Yeah, yeah, our baskets were just very out of date, so it was time for some, some new metal out there. We had our first wedding at Lakeview Nature Area this weekend, that was very exciting, that's something we want to continue to push and advertise, that is a space that is beautiful for a wedding. So we got a wonderful feedback from the family who had the wedding there, and we're excited to have another one in the middle of July. So if you are interested in a wedding, please contact Kara Sahagan, events@mcombparks.com, she will help you get that organized. Heritage Days Week is next week, very excited for the city that they get to have that celebration, we'll be out there with them. As usual, we will have a booth set up with our free mini-golf, we put up our inflatable mini-golf course, and allow the kiddos just to play for free, so. Because of that, Ball Four Family Entertainment Center will be closed on Friday and Saturday to encourage the community to maintain their focus downtown, but we will open Sunday as there is no airport flying this year, pancake breakfast, so. Yeah, so we will be open on Sunday, Heritage Days Weekend at Ball Four, otherwise we're closed. And as you mentioned, we will also be in the parade for Heritage Days. All right, upcoming events and programs, I really am trying to get through this fast, so slow me down if I'm going too quickly. We have our, another Storytime for Sprouts happening June 16th, out at Lakeview Nature Area, this is a free program from 10:00 to 10:30. Our first Randolph Street Rendezvous is this Thursday, June 17th, with onstage band from 7:00 to 10:00. It'll be a beautiful day, we're going to have our lights up as normal, so please come out and enjoy. We have a heck of a lineup this year for the Randolph Street Rendezvous pop-up series, so very excited about that. And at Lakeview Nature Center, we have a Nature Makers Workshop coming up on June 26th from 12:30 to 1:30. That is, that program does cost $8 per resident, or $10 if you're a non-resident, but otherwise, it's a fabulous program. And July, July is Unplug Month, we're very excited to have Unplug McComb and to be able to have some fun offerings for the community to participate in. We are closed July 5th after the Fourth of July, Fourth, Fifth, but otherwise, we'll be grooving with the Unplug Month. July 9th, we are starting a new event, Boogie Bash with DJ B. Tight, that is Brian Kinman. So, we will, we are going to be hosting a dance party for kiddos, he's going to be playing some of the Disney favorites, and we are going to have a bubble machine out there, food vendors, but just, I mean, who doesn't like just to have a dance party? So, the, the age group this was developed for was ages 1 to 10, but let's be real, every parent out there is going to probably be dancing, their older siblings are going to be dancing, so it's just a giant party. But that'll be at Veterans Park again from 5:00 to 7:00 on July 9th.
And that's with DJ?
B. Tight.
B. Tight, Tight?
Tight, B. Tight, yep.
Love it.
He has a gold fanny pack.
We must have pictures.
Oh, we will.
Okay.
Good times. July 10th is Unplug Day with the State of Illinois. We are excited to host a Kids Fitness Day with Heidi Homel Reed. She has done a sunrise yoga class with us in the past, and she will be doing something with us each week through the month of July. So, the Kids Fitness Program is happening at Glenwood Park, again, July 10th, from 10:00 to 11:00. That is built specifically for kiddos ages 6 to 12, and that'll be $8 per kiddo. July 17th, she'll be doing yoga in Everly Park, that is more geared towards adults, from 10:00 to 11:00, again, $8 per person. And then also on July 17th is Nature's Fireworks, this is a popular program we've been doing out at Lakeview for quite some time, learning about fireflies and enjoying the natural environment. Natalie Shelley does a phenomenal job with those programs, but that, again, will be at Lakeview from 7:30 to 9:30 PM, July 17th. And then, there's more obviously, but we have a board meeting, so I'll save it for the rest. And one more item for Unplug McComb, we are in the midst of creating a park passport. This will be a self-guided program that you go through and try to find different, or complete different challenge questions, find different things throughout our parks, and if you complete them up to a certain number of parks, you will get a prize while they last. So, that will be released the first week of July. I don't have an example, otherwise I would have shown you, but we're still working on it.
That's cool.
So, lots of shaking and moving in our main office, it's been a very exciting month.
And how was the movie in the park this past weekend?
It was fabulous, yeah, beautiful weather, it was the smoothest we have ever put that screen up, it was rather frustrating, and Phil came and saved the day.
Frustrating because it was smooth?
Yes, you know, because...
Because you like to have problems?
No, just because, you know, I'm no longer in charge of events and all of a sudden they start going smooth. But, you know, that's just a, you know, tilt our hats towards Karen, her abilities with events so far.
Good deal, all right. Any questions for, any other questions? Director Lenz? All right, well thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next agenda item, consideration of the appointment of a member to fill a board vacancy with possible closed session and possible action, 5 ILCS 122C3. All of you should have received an email with Ms. Molly Selder's Letter of Interest and Resume for consideration for the board vacancy seat. So with that, I would like to make a motion to enter into closed session to discuss under 5 ILCS 210, is that right, 210? No.
No.
Two, one, ILCS 122C3, there we go. Is there a?
I would like to move that we move in closed session for this.
All right.
I don't know, second.
I didn't catch that last one, sorry.
I don't, I didn't know in case of order whether or not you can nominate or move to go into closed session or not. If you did, then I second that.
Okay, great, awesome, okay, so with that, we will...
All in favor?
Oh yes, I'm sorry, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, all right, so with that, we're going to go into closed session, we're going to actually, you can stay there.
Oh yeah, we're going to go in.
We're going to go into another room there.
We're just going to go talk about you.